Let's go ahead and get started. Welcome to the October 10th City Council Meeting. We're going to go ahead and start our meeting with the prayer by Pastor Tim Clark from Celebration Church.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we have tonight. We're to be able to discuss the things of our city. And Father, most importantly, Lord, we submit them into your will. And we ask, Father, for your wisdom, your guidance, your discernment, or for all of those that will make decisions tonight, God. And I just thank you for what you've done, how you've blessed our city, how you've blessed our people. And, Father, I just ask, God, let us live according to your will, submit our lives to you, Lord, and allow you to be the Lord of our lives in all that we do. And we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Do it. Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Council members, we've got a couple items. I know we're looking at pulling item number 14, and we were also discussing item number eight. No, not item number seven. Yeah, don't let me say that out of order. Item number seven. So, y'all good pulling both of those items?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's pull seven and 14. First item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the September 26th Council Meeting in the September 26th work session.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes. Mayor, your report.
Thank you. Good evening. The first thing that I'd like to do is recognize somebody we have in the audience. He's actually the mayor of Demopolis, Alabama, right here, Mr. Woody Collins. He's here tonight. Thank you for being here. Came to visit with me today. Him and his wife came to visit with me, and it's great to have him in Fairhope. Thank y'all. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Who's the ugly guy next to us?
I don't know. Do you know him, Jack? That's actually his son. So, yes, glad to have to. So, we're going to be here tonight. He's here tonight because actually his granddaughter is getting recognized as a junior city council member. But before we do that, I just wanted to give two updates, actually, three updates. First thing is the electric crew that was down in Florida, Watchoula, Florida, came home on Friday. Had a great experience down there, you know, really learned a lot. And actually, they've called from Watchoula. They're planning a visit to Fairhope, so they want to come and express their appreciation here at a council meeting. So, you'll be hearing from them in the next couple months or in the next month or so. Also, we have the homecoming bonfire this Thursday night to celebrate homecoming for Fairhope High School. And that will be down at the pier, and that will be Thursday. And also, I just want to give a shout out to Wes Boyett with the gas department. I had a chance to attend the Alabama Natural Gas Association meeting this past week in Auburn, and Wes was the chair of that roundtable conference and did a really great job. And so Jeremy and I were there, and Wes just did a really great job representing Fairhope. So, we had great utility representation across the state of Alabama and in Florida this past week. So, thank you to the employees and for all they do. So, and at this time, we're going to recognize the junior city council. As y'all know, this is a project, this is a program that's been going on three to four years here in Fairhope. And it was actually established four years ago. Over the past couple of years, we have kind of, or at least last year, we kind of reevaluated what they were doing. We really worked with them, and they have come in to do, you know, art projects and work on procurement and different things, presented those programs to the council. But this year, we really want to focus on, give them a full comprehensive view of what municipal government is like. So, they're going to be working with different committees. We've got one of the members right now, Ellery, who is going to be serving on the steering committee for the Triangle, that planning committee. So, really going to engage them in some of the committees and come into council meetings and make a presentations and really give them a full overview of government. The other thing we're hoping to do is to meet together with Spanish Fort's Junior City Council and Daphne's Junior City Council to kind of collectively come up with some projects that they may want to work on. This year, we have added some students also from St. Michael's and Bayside and Fairhope High School. So, we have two private schools represented, and we're glad to have them here tonight. So, without further ado, I'm going to be announcing them. So, if you'll come up when I call your name, okay? So, tonight, we have seniors. We have Ava Cockey, Ella McDowell, Ellery Scott, and Joe Solomon. So, Joe and Ellery were here with us last year, too. So, they're old hats. They'll tell everybody what to do. We also have juniors, Mary Frances Collins from Bayside Academy. And then we have Jackson Adams, Ethan Kellerman, Josie Lynn, and Addison Spears from Fairhope High School. And then also, we have sophomore from Fairhope High School, Jillian Nichols. So, again, we're so glad to have y'all here with us. They came to their first organizational meeting. Jessica does a great job with them and just kind of keeps them on track, schedules their meetings. They have a schedule of their meetings throughout the year. They got a nice leather portfolio with the city seal on it. They have their lapel pins. So, they are official, and we're so happy to have you and look forward to working with you over the next year. Thank you. We'll go out and get a picture. If y'all don't mind, we'll go in the lobby. Do y'all have anything you want to add, council?
I just want to say that, you know, I've known at some point almost all of these kids. It's really amazing to have such a great group and wide variety, you know, different grades, different schools. I have known most of them, and I think that says a lot about our community. But congratulations to all of you. Very proud of you.
Yep.
Council Martin?
I was proud to have all of you. Look forward to looking, to working with you and hearing your thoughts and opinions on things going on throughout the city. I think you'd be a great asset.
I think it's a great way to engage the young people in our community.
I've known some of these girls as well, and probably not as many as you. My daughter's not as old as yours. But some of these I've been knowing since they've been running around here as a toddler, you know? They all grown up now, but I'm so proud of them, and they're going to be great women, and they're learning about government now.
That's right. We're training our next leaders.
That's right.
That's right. Excited about it.
Proud of you girls.
Y'all don't look scared. It's not that bad.
I'm leaving Ethan and Joe out.
It's not that bad, really. It's not. I promise. So, thank y'all very much. We're going to go to the lobby and take a picture, okay? Thank y'all.
Congratulations, y'all. Marcus. Is that it for your report, Mayor?
That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Next item up, council, is public participation. And this is going to be for agenda items only. If you wish to address the council, you've got three minutes. You can come forward to the podium, give your name and address to the clerk, and you've got three minutes on the topic. Of course, we did pull items number seven and 14, but if you wanted to speak to that, if you're already here, we would let you speak to that as well. So, floor is open.
Good evening, council. My name's Gary Gover. I live at 300 Lincoln Street in Fairhope. I'd like to make a suggestion regarding item number, agenda item 32, and in particular, the golf, disc golf facility for which is a recommendation at the Colony Park. The Colony Park has a large portion of it that is a flood zone. Calpen Creek goes through the heart of it, and that flood zone provides a very important stormwater management function, controlling the water flow all downstream, protecting the downstream environment. I'd recommend that before doing any construction kind of work or aiding facilities such as bathrooms, water, drinking water supplies, parking, those kinds of things, that maybe part of the amenities that should go along with a disc golf facility that might have a fair amount of use, that thought be given to clearing up and re-establishing a management plan. There's a management plan that was drawn up in 2010 for the single tax corporation that really ought to be redone, brought up to date, and made available for the city to use to manage that piece of property. So, I'd recommend that further planning and careful thought be given to this before doing any establishment of any permanent features on that land. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gover. If I... Now, I will say, I think that the disc golf is a very minimal construction. Yes, sir, Councilman Martin?
Yeah, so, I serve on the Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board. That is a, so, Gary, you all have written that plan. Brother Pat White has that, the management plan. So, it has been written and distributed or disseminated to Pat White. Now, has he implemented it yet? I'm not sure. I don't think it's come across our desk yet. I think it has to come to us before we implement it. It hasn't come back to us yet. So, we will keep that in mind. But as far as the disc golf, there's not construction. These are just baskets, from what I understand, baskets that the kids will put on the ground. They're not even going to, we'll do that later. Right now, we're just going to put the baskets in particular strategic order of which they're going to design. And so, there's no disturbance of that particular Colony Park land. If that answers.
But even, I think that even the disc golf course will be laid out with eyes to the future. I mean, they're not going to start on this tomorrow. Like, you know, the talk of the Triangle, you know, what we're going to do out there. That's been going on for years now. So, this golf will probably move a little bit quicker than that Triangle property, but it won't be something they go out and set baskets in the ground tomorrow or post.
Post, right.
Just post.
Thank you. Floor is still open. Yes, sir. I see. Mr. Bead?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Vince Booth. I live at 6541 Beaver Creek Drive. I want to talk to y'all tonight about agenda item number 33, naming the field house at Fairhope Municipal Stadium after Coach Joe Dean. Coach Dean, and I need to tell you, Michael Loggaby would be here. And this kind of started with Michael Loggaby and Dr. Robert Eubank. Michael's got COVID. He volunteered to stay home. Good job, Michael. I'm sure he's watching. Michael would have been here and really wants to be here, but he just couldn't be here. Coach Dean came to Fairhope in 1974. I was a senior in high school, and he came as a defensive coordinator. One of the roughest, gruffest men I've ever come across in my life. And between Coach Majors and a few other guys, I've met some rough gruff ones. But I kind of relate Coach Dean to my father. Rough on the outside, but the biggest, softest, tenderest hearts you've ever seen. So, here in '74, as defensive coordinator. And then he was here '75. '76 to '81, he was the head football coach here. And then he left, and he went over to Robertsdale for a year. And Coach Majors came back here for a third time in 1982, and coached four years. Coach Dean came back in '83, '84, and '85 and finished his career at Fairhope as an assistant principal. While he was assistant principal, he had a few small jobs. We didn't have Spanish Fort High School. We didn't have Daphne High School. He was a bus coordinator for the Eastern Shore, and we didn't have computers. So, Joe was extremely bright and dedicated. Joe was good to a fault. He would do anything that was asked of him. And I told the rec board this when I made this recommendation. Joe was, he played football. He was born, or he was raised in Tuscaloosa. Alabama wasn't real good there in the late '60s, so he went to Ole Miss, played for Johnny Vault, played football and basketball. But he was the sixth man on the basketball court. He was the hatchet man. His job was to take out whoever scored. He was so good at it, the SEC commissioner had a meeting with him and Johnny Vault, the basketball coach, and said, "One more technical, and you'll never play in the SEC in any sport again." But Joe did his job. While he was at Fairhope, after those years I talked about, Fairhope relieved their coach in the middle of the year in 1993. Football team was 0-5 and had 26, 27 players playing. The next Friday night, they had over 45 playing, and they finished the year 3-2 under Joe's leadership. We had a football coach resign in, right in July, right before the season starts. They asked Joe Dean to take over while he's still doing his assistant principal job. Joe stepped right in, no questions asked, did his job. So, Coach Dean brought more to Fairhope than just a coach. You know, most coaches look, "I want to go where the athletes are when they're there, not when they're..." Coach Dean just stepped up every time he was asked. He stepped up as assistant principal. He drove at night and finished his administrative degree. I think he went to Livingston when he was doing that at night so he could become an assistant principal, have the title of assistant principal. And he had kids. I hate to use this analogy, but if anybody's going to run through a brick wall for somebody, they're going to run through it for Joe Dean. He was that type guy. And not only the football players, the kids in the school. So, Joe was just a hardworking, dedicated guy that maybe his record doesn't reflect what it should because of the challenges he's accepted for Fairhope High School. And sometimes, Joe wasn't perfect. Neither am I. Neither are y'all. Joe didn't do everything right, but he did almost everything right. And his heart was in the right spot. I just think this would be a great tribute to Coach Dean. Thank y'all.
All right. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Don Blanchard. I'm here to speak on item 33, naming the field house after Coach Dean. I live in Daphne, but I was assistant coach here at Fairhope High School back in the '80s with Coach Majors and Coach Dean. I also played for Joe Dean at McGill my senior year. And I can tell you, you know, Vince mentioned how rough and tough and gruff Joe was. You might want to ask yourself, why would the boys play so hard for somebody that was so gruff and rough? It's because we realized he loved us. You can't fool a kid. I was in education for well over 40 years. They can smell a fake a mile away. Joe had our back at every turn. And I think maybe it was when we became fathers ourselves, we understood a little bit better about why Joe did the things and how he did it. Personally, you know, I told Joe, "I want to be a coach. Get me off..." Not much call up Bear Bryant, didn't need five foot eight defensive tackles. "Get me on as a manager, Coach. You're from Tuscaloosa. You want to be a coach, Don? Come, stay, go to South, come down here to McGill. I'll teach you how to be a coach." And that's what he did. Every meeting, every coaches' meeting, all night long, if that's what it took. That's the kind of dedication Joe had for his kids and to the school. It's be a great reminder for the boys sometimes because they'll hear the stories. And maybe in the fourth quarter, they'll look up there and see that name and get the extra spark that they need to pull out the win. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Good evening to you all.
Good evening.
It's good to see you again. And I was working on my computer busily this afternoon. Does this time count?
Yes, ma'am.
No, okay. Well, never mind. I won't go there. But I had something else, but I don't have it now. But I have an article that I would like to give to each of you. If you would please study it. Shall I just? I'm Jane Wise. It's 104 Par Circle. And I just want to present this article to you all that I think is very significant for where we're standing with the marijuana issue. And it's adapted from a speech by Alex Berenson, who is the author of Tell Your Children the Truth About Marijuana, Mental Illness, and Violence. Seventy miles northwest of New York City is a hospital that looks like a prison. It's drab, brick buildings wrapped in layers of fencing and barbed wire. The grim facility is called, I'm sorry, the Mid-Hudson Forensic Psychiatric Institute. It's one of the three places in the state of New York where criminals are sent who are mentally ill and defendants are judged not guilty by reason of insanity. Until recently, my wife Jackie, obviously, this is her husband, Dr. Jacqueline Berenson, was a senior psychiatrist there. Many of Mid-Hudson's 300 patients are killers and arsonists. At least one is a cannibal. Most have been diagnosed with psychotic disorders like schizophrenia that provoke them to violence against family members or strangers. A couple of years ago, Jackie was telling me about one of her patients. In passing, she said something like, "Of course, he's been smoking pot his whole life." "Of course?" I said. "Yes, they all, they all smoke." "So, marijuana causes schizophrenia?" I was surprised, to say the least. I tended to be a libertarian on drugs. Years before, I covered the pharmaceutical industry for the New York Times. I was aware of the claims about marijuana as medicine, and I'd watched the slow spread of legalized cannabis without much interest. Jackie would have been within her rights to say, "I know what I'm talking about, unlike you." Instead, she offered something neutral like, "I think that's what the big studies say. You should read them." So, I did. The big studies, the little ones, and all the rest. I read everything I could find. I talked to every psychiatrist and brain scientist who would talk to me. And I soon realized that in all my years as a journalist, I had never seen a story where the gap between insider and outsider knowledge was so great or the stakes so high. I began to wonder why, with the stocks of cannabis companies soaring and politicians promoting legalization as a low-risk way to raise tax revenue and reduce crime. I had never heard the truth about marijuana, mental illness, and violence. I submit this article to you all. And thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Stephen Whitmer, and I practice here in Fairhope at Fairhope Internal Medicine. And I have practiced in Baldwin County for the past 12 years and Fairhope for the past eight and a half. And I live at 19096 A Scenic Highway 98 in Fairhope. I want to speak against the idea of placing a dispensary for medical marijuana in the city of Fairhope. If we, I've been, I'm in my 39th year of practice. And when I first started out in suburban Chicago, we strictly used opioids for the management of cancer pain, which required the filling out of a triplicate prescription, one that went to the pharmacy, one that we retained as a copy, one that went to the state of Illinois. Well, in the mid-1990s, under a lot of pressure and research and organization we now know as Purdue Pharmaceuticals, opioids came to be marketed for the management of non-cancer pain. And look where we are almost 20 years later with that crisis. We're talking about the opioid crisis in the United States, which has claimed many, many lives. And now, we're beginning to retreat on the use of those drugs so widely for non-cancer pain. If you look at the medical literature regarding medical marijuana, there's actually only two conditions in which it is actually being used. And it's only being, and it only should be used under clinical studies, and it's for two types of congenital seizure disorders. It's not for epilepsy in general. And I'm also a medical director with Kindred Hospice in Daphne, and I manage cancer pain and other related pain in the process of dying. And we don't use medical marijuana. This will bleed into the general public as it's being prescribed. Patients ask me to prescribe, but I will not. And it will also bleed into the adolescent and childhood community who are most vulnerable to the development of cannabis use disorder. There's an increase in car accidents and deaths associated with those accidents and violence associated with the misappropriation of medical marijuana. So, there again, I strongly advise it does not be approved for the city of Fairhope. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor and council members, my name is Billy Wise. I live at 104 Par Circle, right here in the beautiful city of Fairhope, Alabama. My comments tonight add detail to my letter of October 3rd, which addressed the question of a medical marijuana dispensary in the city of Fairhope. In my letter of October 3rd, I define supporters of big marijuana as SOBMs, just to make it short. One of the major SOBMs is an organization called MORML, M-O-R-M-L, an acronym for National Organization for the Reform of Marijuana Laws. The major goal of MORML is to do away with any and all laws restricting the use of marijuana, thereby making recreational use of marijuana the law of the land. MORML and the other SOBMs have a common goal of affecting the recreational use of marijuana in all 50 states. Be assured that none of the SOBMs have the slightest concern for the health and well-being of American citizens. The sole goal of the SOBMs is to completely deregulate marijuana so that everyone can get high and the SOBMs can make billions of dollars in profits. The SOBMs are using the same medical marijuana pitch as they did in Georgia seven years ago. It's the famous nose of the camel under the tent approach to an otherwise untouchable topic. Phase one approach, the phase one approach made by the SOBMs in Atlanta led with use of CBD, cannabis oil, an oil derived from marijuana plants as a delivery method. The Alabama approach is more dastardly in that the chewable's delivery method looks for all the world like candy, in spite of assurances in the Alabama marijuana legislation that the product may not be made to resemble candy. Children are much more likely to be drawn to the chewable marijuana product. It looks like candy, dad is chewing it, than to the oily CBD product. The Alabama marijuana bill specifies that the maximum allowed level of THC in the chewable product is 3%. THC, here you go, tetrahydrocannabinol, is the psychoactive constituent in marijuana. That is, the stuff that gives you the high. Naturally grown marijuana today has THC levels ranging from 20 to 25%. This is bad from at least two perspectives. First, children can easily overdose by chewing excessive amounts of the chewable product. Well, it just looks like candy to them. Second, it's known that marijuana is a gateway drug. And having been introduced to medical marijuana with its 3% THC limit, children will surely be drawn to natural grown varieties of marijuana products with much higher levels of THC. Marijuana is not a medicine. Marijuana is an addictive drug that can easily draw children into its grip, especially when introduced to children as a chewable product. There should be no medical dispensary in the city of Fairhope. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman, my name is Queen Watson. I live at 20815 Bishop Road, and here I am. The lady sent me over to get some clarification on the new garbage contract. I left here, when I was here in July, I left here with that we would be exempt from it, but you all needed some time, and they were all happy about that. But now, they're kind of sad because they don't understand that we may not be exempt. And I just want to get some clarification on that.
Okay. Mayor, do you have?
I do not want to just quote that off the top of my head because it was changed with the 50% or with the $10 fee. So, if I can just, if you'll contact my office tomorrow, I'll get you a copy of the ordinance and get the clarification for you.
Okay. Okay.
What specific question, Ms. Queen? We don't really, I mean...
I don't have it here in front of me, so I wouldn't want to misquote it.
Right.
I know, I know you spoke with me, Ms. Queen, about it. Which part are you still, did they not get any answers?
Well, it's two papers. One that you get half off and the other one that you may, or may not be exempt. And being that we all are seniors and live in subsidized housing and don't use the service at all, the garbage service that it is.
Right.
They were looking to be exempt from it, but it's not that way.
Yeah. So, what happened was, I'm going to tell Ms. Queen's story, if I may. So, I think she went to the city, if you don't mind.
I did.
If you don't mind.
Go right ahead.
If you don't mind.
Go, go right ahead.
I think she went to the city. And that's where the confusion, because the city, there's two forms. The first time she filled out the wrong form.
Yeah.
And so they, she got the correct form.
Yeah, this is the form that they said that I needed.
Okay.
And she got the correct form, and she filled it out. And for, for, and I don't, I'm like you, I don't have that in my, so I don't know the, the parameters, but they said she did not qualify for the exemption. But I know we added the exemption in there, in the ordinance.
Yeah, it's there.
So I'm not sure. We would have to sit down and, and actually see where you are with that.
We need to do that from my office.
Yes.
So if you can call me tomorrow, then we'll get it, we'll get it taken care of and figure out what's going on. But I can't do it right here during the meeting because I don't have any of the information in front of me.
That would be fine.
Okay.
I just need something to tell them, so they won't get the depends all in a ward. That's what they're doing.
So, 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 yeah, just tell, tell the ladies, tell all the ladies, just tell them tomorrow we'll have, we'll, we'll, the mayor, and you can call me as well, if you have any, we'll have an answer for you, Ms. Queen.
Okay.
We're gonna do the best we can.
Okay.
So, sir, there's one thing that we added in there. You have to be Social Security only, so if you receive income from other than Social Security, then you would not qualify. It's only your, your only means of income is Social Security only. If that clarifies?
Yes, I think one of the girls, Jessica, told me that, that I didn't qualify because I not only get Social Security, I get my RSA, Teachers Retirement Check, and that I would not qualify for the exemption, but I did qualify for the half off.
Right.
But these other ladies don't want that at all. They don't, and a lot of them do just have the Social Security, so.
Yeah, they just have it.
So if they just have it, then I guess that would be the parameter to qualify. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. All right, Ms. Queen, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. The floor is still open for items five through 33. Anyone else wish to address the council? All right, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the floor and open it up for council comments. Councilman Burrell?
I don't have anything in particular to say regarding the city business tonight, but I would like to recognize Mr. Walter Lewis, Vince. If you don't know Walter, you may know him here. Y'all played for the same gentleman at Tuscaloosa, probably should meet each other. So glad to have him in the audience tonight as a special guest along with everybody else here. And thank you for everybody's comments on these very important items.
All right, thank you. Councilman Martin?
Um, I guess we're gonna have, finally, the last two years, we hadn't had a homecoming parade, so I'm excited about that, that parade, this, this, huh? What?
We don't have a parade.
Having a bonfire.
We're having a bonfire.
Well, okay. Homecoming, get together.
We are having a get together.
Homecoming, get together. We hadn't had anything in the last two years. So, all right, so homecoming, get together, that's coming up, so I guess that'll be fun for the kids. Other than that, I don't have anything.
All right, well, I just wanted to mention that the Fairhope Library did kick off their capital campaign for building out the upstairs area. And while everyone is celebrating at the, at the bonfire for the homecoming, which is, is an exciting event, and certainly having a very exciting football season, I don't want to go without mentioning that the middle school team is playing for the county championship Thursday night in Daphne. And they were county champs last year, so hopefully they can repeat. Councilman Robinson?
Uh, no, you mentioned the game, 6 o'clock Thursday night in Daphne. Homecoming, we're excited about, but let's take them one at a time. Thursday night first, county championship.
That's middle school.
Councilman Boone?
Well, back to city business. We have a personnel board meeting on October 20th.
We're sorry, Boone.
Now, the deal is normally our personnel board meetings are at 7:30, or 7:00 in the morning, so, but this was been changed to 5:30 PM for all you non-early risers can attend this meeting. October 20th, in the mayor's conference room. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Go Fairhope.
All right, first item up is the final adoption. And this is for ordinance to establish water and wastewater rates for all customers of the city of Fairhope Water and Wastewater Systems, and to repeal and replace ordinance number 1684. This was introduced at the September 26 council meeting, and this sets rates above 7,000 gallons in usage, and be getting charged at a, a higher rate. So, council, I know we've discussed this a few times, and of course, was introduced last council meeting. Jason is here, if you got any further questions. I think Jason has covered it before, but would y'all like to hear a final overview, just since we're, since we're actually looking at adopting it?
No.
No, no, pretty good.
What was that change, just real quick, Jason? When you get over 7,000, what was the additional price per thousand? $1?
Yeah.
Yes.
A dollar per thousand after that.
And that pretty much sums up the change.
Yep. That's it.
It's different from inside and outside the city, but yeah.
All right, would, would someone like to make a motion on final adoption?
Make a motion for final adoption.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Clerk, would you call the question?
Place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Council President?
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you, clerk. Item number six is an ordinance to authorize the operation of a medical cannabis dispensary within the corporate limits of the city of Fairhope. Would somebody like to introduce the ordinance? Or would you like to amend the ordinance?
You're gonna amend it before you introduce it?
Yeah. So any conversation on that? And we've had, we've had some citizens speak against this, so council just take that into consideration. But what, what would y'all like to see done as far as making an amendment on this, if you wish to?
I'd like to see at least either an additional whereas, or within the whereas number three language inserted that says that it's only in expressly authorized areas of the city. Is that what we said, Marcus?
I had only allowed expressly permitted areas except by planning and zoning, applicable use tables, and subject to overlay restrictions.
Yeah, that's a lot better. That's what we said earlier.
Okay. All right. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance with that additional language?
I'll introduce the ordinance with the additional language.
All right, ordinance is introduced. And I think we would let this lay over, but would anyone like to discuss this now while we're on the topic?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't mind saying something about it.
Yes, sir.
And I'm, I'm not here ready to take a position one way or, one way or the other, but, you know, it seems like the comments that were made in opposition to this, number one, are serious. I mean, and they've been gracious enough to provide us articles on their position. But it almost seems like that argument is almost to the legalization of marijuana itself. We are not voting as a council to legalize marijuana one way or the other. That's already been decided by the state for certain conditions. But in addition to that, we're not saying that someone in Fairhope should or should be getting medical marijuana for any purpose. That again, has to be decided by physician. And that physician has to determine whether or not a prescription is appropriate for that person for their condition, and whether or not medical marijuana in any form would be helpful to them. And I am not a physician. And I don't make decisions on what the appropriate remedies are for certain people for certain things. I wouldn't do that. I'm not trained to do that. And so in the event a dispensary is allowed, number one, I don't think there's any guarantee that we'd even, one would even be placed in the city of Fairhope, right? Is that fair?
Yeah, we don't have any guarantees on anything.
Um, but I just, you know, I've got, I just want everybody to understand what it is we're truly voting on. And it's not whether someone should take it, someone should get it, whether it has good effects, bad effects, the right effects, the wrong effects. It's whether or not there is a dispensary that a physician can write you a prescription for what they deem to be appropriate. And I'll, I definitely appreciate hearing from a physician who thinks it's not appropriate. That carries weight to me. But I just want everybody to understand what it is we're, we're talking about, and not get lost in whether or not you think marijuana is good and appropriate versus not, because that's not a decision that any of us really get to make.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Robinson. Councilman Boone, any comments?
Actually, I guess the counter to that, anytime we make a decision that's based on allowing something of this nature, it still gives the opinion that we are condoning it. If we didn't condone it, we wouldn't allow it.
I don't condone the prescription of pain medication or, or hypertensive medications either, because I'm not trained to do that. But I wouldn't prevent a doctor from prescribing it if that's what they thought was appropriate for their patient.
But, well, by allowing this one way or the other doesn't allow a doctor, stop a doctor prescribing this, it allows, you can't get it in Fairhope. And by allowing it to be done in Fairhope, you still condone the idea.
Well, there are one, in my opinion. Yeah, the state is actually, I, I, we're not, we couldn't do this if it didn't go through legislation at the state level. So this is something we're not allowing, the state is allowing it. I mean, this is something that we're saying, if the state's allowing, we didn't make the decision to have the legalization of dispensaries in Alabama, but it's here.
Well, maybe in the state of Alabama, it doesn't have to be in Fairhope. That's the whole point.
Well, Fairhope's Alabama.
What Alabama does is what they do, but we don't have to condone, we don't have to accept it.
Councilman Burrell, any comments?
No, just, the only comments I really want to make was that, and I believe that the people that presented earlier were educated and they know this, but for anybody that might be watching or somebody that might be in the audience, I want to make sure that people know that when you're talking about what the state did allow or didn't allow, the products that are not allowed, raw plant materials, products that can be smoked or vape, they're not allowed, food products such as cookies or candies, and I'm not making a case for or against, I just, I don't want anybody to have the impression that people are gonna be openly smoking pot in, in any city in Alabama for that matter. It's just, it's not a form that's allowable.
Yeah.
All right. Council, I guess if there's no additional commentary on this, we can, we can let this lay over. I certainly don't think this is one we would want to take immediate action on and spend the next few weeks reviewing the materials you've been given, researching it on your own, and, and be thinking about it. I'm sure we'll have some additional discussion next week, if you are good letting this one lay over. Item number seven, we pulled from the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. Item number eight is an ordinance to amend ordinance 1510 and repeal replacing, known as Personnel Rules, Policies, Procedures, specifically related to health insurance benefits for eligible retirees, the Wellness Incentivized Program. So this is related to the wellness program. And Kim had, had a chance to speak to this a little bit during the work session. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
All right, thank you, Councilman. Ordinance has been introduced. Would y'all like to hear some additional info from Kim, maybe on this? I know we've already covered it in the work session. It's basically $50 per month if you do not go through the biometric screening. We, we need employees to go through that biometric screening in order to, to, you know, basically, the ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure philosophy, and anything we can catch early will save us money in the long run as a city, and we're self-funded on, on our health insurance. So costs keep going up, and this is an opportunity for us to, to try to get those under control. And, and I think that we've attempted to incentivize people in a positive manner. And in this case, we've got to say, okay, well, we're still got the benefit if you do sign up, there's still, you know, $25, I guess, for signing up for your quarterly coaching. But we, we need to make it, unfortunately, you got to have a punitive position as well in order to, to encourage more people to, to go through that biometric screening, and, and the coaching sessions quarterly if necessary. So if you're in really good shape, you can score out of the coaching session.
When would this take effect? Kim?
January 2.
January 1.
So the biometric screening will be done in December for the premium for January.
So I would have four quarterly coaching sessions, correct? So, Councilman Burrell might not have any.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna save that $50 a month.
I would say you might be healthy enough that you just score out of it.
I hope so.
All right, council, any, any questions? Any commentary on this? Everybody good letting it lay over, right? Okay. We'll let that one carry over. Next item on the agenda is a resolution for the holidays for the fiscal year '22 and '23. We've got a separate attachment here, taking into consideration those holidays, just to cover them real quick. And because we're on, on a, I guess, different fiscal calendar, we're, we're starting with Veterans Day, so we've got Veterans Day, Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving, a half a day for Christmas Eve, a full day for Christmas, New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday, Memorial Day, Independence Day, and Labor Day. Those are the holidays currently for the city.
Would we accept the holidays as presented?
We've got a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor of the holiday schedule, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Item number 10 is a resolution toward bid 23-002 to Blast Soccer Club, Inc., for the lease of the Fairhope Soccer Concession Stand at the soccer complex for $417 per month. All right, we've got a motion.
A second.
And a second. Any further discussion, council?
Councilman Robinson, did all the attorneys finally agree?
I believe so.
You did?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But I, I don't know that you can ever say all the attorneys agree. That doesn't really make sense.
Well, did the, 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 the three attorneys that talked about this?
But, but this was done in the way that was recommended to us to make sure that we checked every box for legal purposes.
Very good.
All boxes are officially checked, right?
All boxes have officially been checked.
Okay. All right, well, we've, we've got a motion and a second. Any further comment on this? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, John. I appreciate you being here tonight. Next item up is a resolution toward bid 2522 to Harris Contracting Services for LED lighting package installation at Valanda Park Baseball Field with a not-to-exceed amount of $78,000.
And, Mayor, just for clarification, we've already approved a, a lighting package for the four new fields. This will be for the existing fields at Valanda?
Just for the one field, and then we'll start taking those lights and put them on other fields. Yes.
We're kind of working at a one, a one field at a time.
We are, one at a time.
And then taking whatever used ones that still are operational and moving them to filling.
Correct.
So these are for the existing fields?
These are.
Awesome.
Well, but it's just one, just one field, but it's a, one at a time.
But still.
And, and I know we've, we've all probably received some emails or seen some Facebook commentary on this, and, and this is something that was in the works and, and then in process and plan, but, you know, it just takes money and time to do all this stuff.
It does, and even though it's only to replace one field, getting the, the working lights from that one field to be able then to sort of repair and replace ones that are down on the other fields that we currently cannot.
Can I, this is, that's not correct, though.
That's not correct.
No, it's not correct. Because it is, this is, I just went back and started looking, because we've been talking about the other one, too. This is for the... This is for the installation of the lights at the, at the field, at the new field. We, we're running, we ran the conduit, but we don't have the equipment to set the poles and everything, so this is for the installation of the lights on those four new fields.
These are on the four new fields.
I got it right on the radio.
This is the four new fields.
Yes, this is the four new fields. We, you'll see the next one, the, or the bid, we've got the bid going out on the other one.
So we are working on the one field at a time.
Correct, we are, yes.
I feel much better knowing it's four fields and not one.
Yeah, no doubt.
Well, the one field will cost over 100 just for the lights, but this is just the installation, yes. That's why I started looking, I'm like, that's not, I didn't, I spoke.
About to authorize some overtime for the electric department.
That's right.
All right, Counsel, any further comments?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We've got a motion and a second. All right, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number 12 is a resolution that Mayor Sherri Sullivan has hereby authorized to execute a contract for natural gas engineering consulting services with Magnolia River and approves the negotiated proposed rate with a not-to-exceed amount of $500,000. We discussed this being the 200,000, 300,000 bucket, and not really fully knowing what this may cost, but if y'all have got any additional questions, please, we've asked Wes while he's here, and I know we've covered it in detail in the work session. Any questions, Counsel?
I don't want to ask him, because Wes looks so eager to answer them, so I'm just here if you need me.
The question you should be, I don't like that a lot.
Come on.
Just hear if you need me. You did a great job explaining in the work session what I said, buddy.
All right. Well, if no one has any questions for Wes, does anybody have interested to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve this election.
I'll second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Thank you, sir. Item number 13 is a resolution that Mayor Sherri Sullivan has hereby authorized to execute a contract for extension number one, and this is for the three-year pest control for city buildings with Red Pest Solutions, for an additional one year to extend the reference contract until October 20th, 2023, with the same terms and conditions as the original bid award, the cost not to exceed $12,371.04.
So move.
Got a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any need for discussion on this item? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number 14 has been pulled from the agenda, so we're on to item number 15, and this is a resolution that Mayor Sherri Sullivan has hereby authorized to execute a contract for professional services for environmental and cultural resources assessment and permitting at the K-1 Center with Evren Environmental LLC with a negotiated not-to-exceed amount of $39,800.
So move.
We've got a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on this item? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number 16 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and the Baldwin Pops for an appropriation of $3,000, in-kind services amount, in the amount of $8,400, and resources including personnel, but not security after normal business hours, and provides an exception to the signed ordinance by allowing banners for their citywide events to be displayed 10 days prior to those events to advertise and promote the City of Fairhope. Any questions or comments on the Baldwin Pops? These next 16 items are all appropriations.
Can we do unanimous?
You mean, can we do like a, I wish we could.
I vote to approve 16, 32.
Unanimous, right, unanimous.
I'd be in favor of that, but I'm afraid that's not allowed.
We need to talk about that.
We can't do it. They're all, we've got, they're all, they're all contracts.
Right, I know, I'm just.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve number 16.
All right, got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Counsel, just, just to address, and I'll read them one at a time, but if there are any that you wish to, to speak on, if you may, if I get a motion and a second, we're just, we're going to kind of move through.
I want to request that you jump to item 30 and then item 33, so people can maybe go to dinner.
Okay, that sounds fair. Let's, Counsel, if y'all don't have an issue with that, I think that that might be a good idea.
I think that's fair enough.
All right, so, y'all have to listen to me real.
Change of order, make a motion for change of order.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
All right, all right, motion passes, if you need that. Item number 30 is a request for the Eastern Shore Optimists Club requesting an in-kind donation to use the Fairhope Pacific Center for the Dogwood Trail Pageant and Scholarship Program.
I move to grant the request.
Second.
And thank the people that have done this for so many years.
Got a motion and a second.
And a third.
Thank you, Ms. Bronson, and a third. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
And a job well done.
Motion passes. I'll have my oldest out there participating this year.
We'll lobby him from the bench.
I'm just saying, wish her luck, she, she need it. And item number 33 is a recommendation from the Parks and Rec Committee, recommended to City Council, number one, to approve the disc golf course at the Colony property, and number two, to name the Fairhope Fieldhouse after Coach Joe Dean.
I move to approve both recommendations.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for both recommendations. Any further discussion, Counsel?
Appreciate the gentleman, took the time to come up here tonight and speak about Coach Dean. It's good, good lesson for everybody.
All right.
Mr. President, is this really a lead?
Yes, sir.
Say something real quick, I think.
Absolutely.
I'd like to thank the Rex Park for recommending this, represent the city council, and thank the council for that. Sure, we have not talked, but I'm sure he would talk to Alice Dean, I've talked to Alice Dean twice, and she took that and said, well, the legacy is not always to be able to live alone, but two of those are your education, and they're all friends, it's gotta happen. I'll be, I'll be, I'll be very happy to help. It will be noted.
Lesson. Well, I, I think it says a lot about, about Coach that all these years later, y'all are here speaking on behalf of him, so obviously made a big impression. Counsel?
Counsel, Conyers, can I just add? So Coach Dean was in coaching high school when I was there, and he, I mean, everything they said is absolutely true. I've grown up with his three kids. They're all just fantastic individuals, and him and his wife were just, I mean, they always welcomed everybody into their home, and you just knew at school, I mean, he was gruff, don't get me wrong, he would, he would call you out pretty quickly, but he had a really big heart, and just so happy that we're able to do this for him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Should have lived down the street from him.
I don't think we voted yet.
Not yet. All those in favor, Counsel?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motions both pass, thank, thank you. Appreciate y'all. All right. Thank you for the recommendation of letting, letting them get out and get to dinner. We're going to back up now, Counsel, with item number 17, and this is a resolution that Mayor Sherri Sullivan has authorized to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and the Downtown Fairhope Businesses, an association for appropriation of $20,000 to advertise and promote the City of Fairhope.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a couple seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 18 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute a contract with the Eastern Shore Art Center for use of the city facilities for an appropriation of 20,000 for funds to support and sponsor the educational programs through the Art, Art Center's Academy of Fine Artists.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number 19 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and the Eastern Shore Chamber of Commerce for an appropriation of $20,000, which includes $14,000 for the annual leaders council program to advertise and promote the City of Fairhope.
So move.
Got a motion and a second.
Yep.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number 20 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and Accumatical Ministries Incorporated for an appropriation of $10,000 to support the needs of Fairhope residents.
Move for the mayor to execute the contract.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Item number 21 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and the Fairhope Film Festival for an appropriation of $6,000 to help bring sustained economic growth from the film industry to the Alabama Gulf Coast through its Fairhope Film Festival.
So move.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, item number 22 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and the Fairhope Pirate Booster Club for an appropriation of $10,000 to be used to assist and benefit all sports in both men's and women's athletic programs, and provide the use of the Fairhope Pacific Center for the annual drawdown and silent auction, which includes the use of associated rooms as needed, placement of tent in the parking lot, and use of the facilities, tables, chairs, and tent.
So move.
Got a motion and a second. I know that was a little longer, but all those in favor of that resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, motion passes. Resolution 23, or item 23 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and the Mobile Bay Estuary Program for appropriation of $15,000 to support activities related to stormwater education and water shut management.
So move.
All right, we've got a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any, any discussion on this one?
I'd like to see some kind of report from them, from what we're giving them, if that's possible. Just if they come into a work session or something, give us a 10-minute, you know.
I don't think that's asking too much. Mayor, would you mind coordinating that?
Yeah, I think it'd be interesting.
All right, thank you. All right, any further discussion, Counsel? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, item 24 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and the Fairhope Rotary Point Clear, or Fairhope Point Clear Rotary Youth Club for an appropriation of $57,000 to help manage and operate the Fairhope Point Clear Rotary Youth Club facility, which includes cleaning supplies not to exceed $2,000, which is included in the total amount.
So move.
Got a motion and a second. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Item 20, 25 is a resolution between, authorizing Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute a contract between City of Fairhope and the Baldwin County Economic Development Alliance for an appropriation of $20,000 to support economic development facilitation within the City of Fairhope, and those funds are actually, we're routing to them through money we get from AMEA, which can be used to support economic development.
So move.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, item number 26 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and the Baldwin County Trail Blazers for an appropriation of $5,000 to support the Smart Walks and the Walking School Bus Program, and they have the National Walk to School Day was last week, so they had a really good crowd and good turnout.
So move.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, item 27 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and Care House for appropriation of $5,000 to help with continuing support for children who are victims of sexual and severe physical abuse, and to help with the distribution of the child abuse prevention curriculum.
So move.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Item number 28 is a resolution that Mayor Sherri Sullivan is authorized to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and Safe Harbor Animal Coalition for an appropriation of $5,000 to help trap, neuter, and return TNR local area cats, and this is something we've actually talked about, Mayor and I at least, talked about it a lot lately. This group has been reaching out, they, they've been doing apparently a pretty substantial amount of trapping in our area and, and just seeking some support, and I think this is something that used to be handled more by the Fairhope Cat Coalition in the past, but anyways, any questions for this?
I'd say, you know, it's a new, it's a new appropriation, but I, I'm anxious to see how it helps, and I think it'll help, and I hope that it does, and it could save us a lot of money on the back end by doing so. Might take, it might take a couple of years to take effect.
But I'll gladly provide some reporting, too, how many, how many cats do, so.
Yeah, that'd be great, Mayor.
And, and they've, they've pointed out some sites where they've trapped quite a few, so.
Well, they should return just to wherever they got them from.
Yeah.
But they're not cat, always, they'll, they'll find the neutral, but eventually they won't be there.
Yeah.
It'd take a few years, as Councilman Burrell stated, to, to really know whether it's working, but, but, yeah, you hate to grow the appropriation column, but this is one that may save us money in the long run.
It's a balance.
All right, would anyone like to make a motion on this item?
So move.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Item 29 is a resolution that Mayor Sherri Sullivan has hereby authorized to execute a professional services agreement between the City of Fairhope and the Haven to partner the efforts, objectives, and resources and manpower of the city and the Haven to better fulfill the needs of the homeless and unwanted animals. The term of this agreement is for five years with an option for an additional five years. The amount of the Haven's appropriation is $150,000 per year unless amended via budget approval by the city council. I think we might need a little more discussion on this item. Mayor, would you mind?
I would be happy to.
Hit the highlights.
So we, Councilman Conyers and I met with the Haven, the Board of Directors, the Chair of the Board of Directors, and the General Manager for the Haven, and made some changes to the contract, but there were a few things in here we talked about, specifically if they intake animals from outside of Fairhope. They don't typically intake them, but from other rescue shelters, they will bring an animal in to keep it from being euthanized, to keep, and if they have space. So in this resolution, we, and they said they could provide documentation that City of Fairhope funds are not expended on those animals, they could provide all that information, but they are using a city facility. So after talking to Mr. McDowell earlier today, we wanted to add an amendment that could, that would say basically an additional consideration for services, the Haven is allowed to shelter house and provide services for X number of dogs or cats from outside the city limits of Fairhope. Not sure we want to go that far with it, but say if there's space availability, there was some wording that I think we all went back and forth on, or just Jimmy, Lisa, and Marcus and myself, in an email, to state that we would, you know, want to make sure that we're not just giving them a, a blank, a blank slate to go, you know, to pull in animals from everywhere.
Right, and not using the city.
Funds for that, correct, correct. And again, they do have partnerships, I think one thing that we have to keep in mind is one of the things about, you know, being able to adopt animals out or strays that are left here in Fairhope, is, is building those relationships with other rescues in the area, whether it be, you know, the pet store in Daphne where we use their kennels to house Fairhope where we use their kennels to house Fairhope cats, to, you know, expose them for adoptions, or we work with Ballin County Animals Shelter. So there's a lot of relationships that they just build trying to, you know, find pets a good home.
Thank you for that, that background. Counsel, any questions for the mayor on this item?
This amount has not changed, right, Mayor?
It was the same last year as it is this year. That's correct.
Yeah, what I, but this is, I think this may be just a new contract, though, and, and I, I don't see it. I want to make sure I'm not missing it. We, we gave them a fixed amount. We didn't agree to that, you know, so, you know, we're going to pay them so much per day, so much per animal.
We removed that from, we removed that. That's correct.
And where would we add that other language if we need to, you know, if we need to make a motion to adopt an amended agreement?
It's in, it's under Section 3, Operations in Service, under 1. At the bottom of that.
Can you read that language, Mayor?
I can't. It says, furnish and maintain employees, staff, or suitable sheltering and for the handling of stray, impounded, and unwanted companion animals turned over to the Haven exclusively from the city or its residents from within the city animal control jurisdiction, including the general care, cleaning, and nourishment of the companion animals from Fairhope jurisdiction only. The Haven services provide, provided to animals will include enriched exercise, care, and feeding, reasonably necessary medical treatment. Companion animals are specifically defined as dogs and cats. Companion animals specifically exclude livestock, and it defines those reptiles and wild or exotic animal, animals. The shelter shall include cat kennels, dog kennels, and runs. The Haven will provide care services for impounded animals awaiting disposition by the courts until each time, until such time the court reaches the final disposition in the case. No city funds shall be used or expended for the care, treatment of shelter animals relocated or otherwise brought into the city limits of Fairhope from other shelters. Outside sources are from the areas outside the city limits of Fairhope. And then we, we talked about adding that, and we talked about adding at the end of it, right, right here. At the end of this, that we would say that not only is, if space is available in the, in the kennels designated for the Haven.
Only in the kennels designated for.
Well, they're.
We don't want them using the city designated kennels.
Right. We have kennels that we leave open for, you know, for our animal control officers.
Right.
So they would not be able to utilize our kennels. They would have to utilize the ones that are designated already for the Haven.
And what was the, what was their response to, you know, they put out an ad that they rescued some cats at a, at a, at a pet store in Daphne, and they were using that for fundraising efforts. What was their? I'm sure you asked them about that when you say you're only using it for animals rescued from the municipal limits of Fairhope, where they were clearly advertising that they were rescuing them from somewhere else.
So that was one of the things I was speaking to. So they had a relationship with Petco where they have kennels up there in their store that you can go in and view adoptable pets. So we take cats from here and take them up there to expose them for adoptions that they house them there. And so they, there was three cats that somebody dumped. They did raise funds to help take care of those cats. They actually raised excess funds that will also be able to be, they, they did, they did, yeah, yeah. And they did pet adoptions there probably once a month.
And they would not put those in the city designated kennel space? They'd put that in the Haven designated space?
And just to be clear, Council Chair, the reason that we're not using the city space is because it would cost us money if those spaces were not there, correct? Is that what I'm, is that?
Well, you just never know when you're going to need them. To be honest, like after hours and on weekends, if there's no kennel space available for the city. And the chief may be able to speak to this better than I can, but the animal control officers need, or the police need space in the kennel. So we don't want them just seeing we have an available space and, you know, putting a dog in there. We want to be able to save some space in case we need it weekends or after hours for police officers or animal control.
Council Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the contract from agreement between the City of Fairhope and the Haven with the aforementioned edits the mayor had read for the record under Operations in Service. That's Roman numeral three, Operations in Service, A1.
Well done. All right, we got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion on that? All right, we're hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Item number 30, we have already approved. Item number 31 is a request for golf green fees and cart fees for the Fairhope Educational Enrichment Foundation, the FIF golf tournament as an in-kind donation.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the request, please say aye.
Aye.
I just mentioned Councilman Burrell chaired that event for many, many years and plays in there with the B Ringers and.
None since I've been on the council, though, so I'm not, not voting on, on that, something I'm, I'm a part of, other than a donor and participant.
All right, item number 32 is a request from Mary Risner, Executive Director of the Fairhope Film Festival, requesting permission to close South Summit Street between Fairhope Avenue and the end of the fence of the property at 6 South Summit on Saturday, November 12th, from 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM for the red carpet party and use of 10 barricades, six to eight trash cans, and electric power hookup. Also requesting the use of the Welcome Center on South Section as their box office from Wednesday, November 9th through Sunday, November 13th. Times are listed on the letter of request, requesting use of the Fairhope public grass base near the Fairhope clock for promotional intent and permission to, to place the following signage. Pole banners on each of the city's six banner light posts or more, subject to availability, to be hung 14 days prior to the festival.
So moved.
We got, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Just because there's a lot of information in that one. All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number 33, we have already approved. Counsel, that gets us to item number 34, which is public participation. And if you wish to address the counsel on anything at this point, you've got three minutes. Just come to the podium, give your name and address, and you've got three minutes. Floor is open. Really is just John and Walter at this point. Do y'all have anything to say?
You got anything to say, John?
No.
Walter?
Walter, you got anything to say?
I'll break ice.
Okay.
I'd like to say, it's, it's a pleasure to come see y'all do business tonight. I've just been thoroughly impressed with everyone in terms of how you handle your business. I saw Jay in the restroom and just told him the same thing. It's just all good. And, you know, myself and Jonathan McCord, who's with me, we're investment bankers. We do work for cities and stuff like that, but I have to say, this is my first time having a chance just to just see and just listen to the whole thing here with the city. Sherri, great job, you know, just handling your business and stuff, and is it Jessica? The guy that do the bit? She does, she does an outstanding job of just laying y'all's stuff out there, and I was just very impressed with that. So it was just a great, great honor for us to be here to participate with you all tonight. So thank you so much for that opportunity.
Thank you for the comments, and we always appreciate you coming and spending time with us.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, well, John, do you have anything to say? Okay.
No.
All right, well, that's it.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. We're out of here.